Okay, we're starting the February 3rd, Thursday, 1:10 PM meeting of the Public Safety Intergovernmental and Military Affairs via video conferencing. The meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event we have to abruptly end this hearing due to the technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at the next hearing date we have. Anyway, a public notice will be posted at the website and testifiers participating remotely, your audio will be muted and your video disabled until you have to turn to testify. The time limit for testifier is one minute, which we'll be enforcing because of the large number of testifiers. I'll be reading a list of individuals who submitted written testimony for each measure. We apologize if the closed captioning doesn't accurately prescribe, transcribe the names. If you're interested in viewing the written testimony, go to the legislature's website and you'll find a link on the status page for the measure. This meeting will conclude, will include the following agendas. Starting with Senate Bill 2001, but it'll be like I said, it's today, 1 o'clock, or 1, actually 1:10 PM with the Committee on Public Safety. There's any temporary glitches during your turn to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to the time constraints. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the committee has a written testimony. Anyway. So with that, I guess we're ready to roll. What? Oh, yeah, before I go further, let me introduce the committee. We have Senator Revere, Senator Decoit, Senator Favella, and my vice chair, Senator. Well, I did introduce you already, Senator. Okay, I think. Yeah, I mentioned the one minute and I think that's about it. I can't say anybody else on it. Okay. Give me the countdown and we can start the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we're live. Okay, here we go. Okay. The first one is on Senate Bill 2001 and we have testifiers beginning with Corey Young, Deputy Attorney General.
Good afternoon, Chair Nishihara, members of the committee. Thank you for allowing me to testify on behalf of the department. We appreciate the purpose of the bill and actually allowing families to try and get some closure by accessing police closing reports is a laudable end. However, we're afraid that the bill would actually conflict with 92F regarding the disclosure of government records. There's going to be, within the closing reports, confidential personal information which can be redacted, but there's going to be also references to witnesses, testimony and other sensitive materials that should they fall into the wrong hands could prove extremely problematic. We think that in certain circumstances, the bill would clear the way for families to get these reports. However, we would ask that the bill be amended to essentially give way to 92F and the governmental concerns for keeping it private under certain circumstances so as not to essentially frustrate governmental purposes like the prosecution of criminals if some of these reports pertain to cases that are still ongoing or where the hope of prosecution is still alive. Thank you for allowing me to testify and I'll stand ready to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I got a question to you, Mr. Young. You said that if we amended to include that 92F?
Yes, Senator. Basically, as written, it doesn't make reference to 92F and we're afraid that in a large number of circumstances, there will be conflict between the two. The timeframes that bill would establish for the disclosure of these closing reports are likely to, in certain circumstances, require the government to disclose documents that are unwarranted invasions of personal privacy or frustrate a legitimate governmental purpose, that being the prosecution of potential murderers. You'd only need to look at the famous case of Peter Boy Kama on the Big Island to see a case where a small child had gone missing, presumed dead, 19 years later, enough evidence was accrued to charge his parents with murder and ultimately they pled to manslaughter. This bill would have allowed them after five or seven years to get access to those police reports and it's very likely that what ended up being a successful prosecution would not have occurred if basically the murderers or the killers of Peter Boy were able to get those closing reports. So we would ask for an amendment that would allow for the 92F exceptions for the police to basically hold back those reports, but in other cases, the police would be allowed to disclose them.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you, members. Any questions, members?
Yeah, I got a question, Chair.
Yes?
Did we get any response from HPD or the police?
I don't recall. Anyway, I know we have one next is Jordan Lowe for the Public Safety. So send it away. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to wanted to get that feel that a public safety is testifying. I guess it, okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So Jordan Lowe for Deputy Director for Public Safety.
Good afternoons, Chair. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. We'd like to mirror what the previous deputy AG has indicated in terms of his concerns. We will stand by our written testimony.
Okay.
Mirror us those concerns.
Okay, thank you, Director. Fina Bonohan. Bonohan. Is she here? Fina? No, last time they said approve, but they weren't. Okay, thank you. But then we're going to move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 2239. Well, before I go on to that, Senator Favella, did you get your answer to your question that you asked?
Yeah, I was just kind of concerned that we got everybody else testifying and we didn't have anybody from HPD to clarify or the sensitivity of the testifying.
No, no, HPD did not send in. Thank you. Okay, Senate Bill 2239, first testifier is Carrie Anne Shirota for the ACLU.
Aloha, Chair Nishihara, Vice Chair Decoit, members of the committee, Carrie Anne Shirota on behalf of the ACLU. We are strongly in support of SB 2239. The increasing use of military equipment, weapons and tactics against citizens must stop. Every year, millions of dollars' worth of military equipment flows from the federal government to state and local police departments. Hawaii is no exception. In 2019, HPD purchased a Bearcat, which is a tactical intervention vehicle with chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear and explosive capabilities, which cost the taxpayers $580,000. In 2014, Maui Police Department also purchased a Bearcat. It cost the taxpayers a quarter of a million dollars. Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources acquired our long-range acoustic device, often referred to as an LRAD or sound cannon. This weapon was developed for and used by the military to force compliance by causing pain and has been brought by the state to peaceful demonstrations in Mauna Kea, Waikiki and Kupuna and a Sherwood Forest. Though the state claimed that it would only be used as a loudspeaker not to disperse crowds, human and civilian groups have warned that LRADs can cause devastating long-term effects and even permanent loss.
Wait, can you, I'm sorry, Carrie, can you summarize?
Yes, so we ask that there is, even though there's been federal legislation to address some of these place some restrictions, there's still a gap. This specific bill would specifically ban Bearcats and other types of tactical weapons and we urge you to pass this law. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kat Brady.
Aloha. We are, Kat Brady testifying for Community Alliance on Prisons. We believe that weapons of war should not be used against peaceful people who are protecting the land, their culture, or doing what the state has failed to do. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have a late testimony by Valaroso, Captain for the HPD.
Aloha, sorry, can you guys hear me? Having a technical difficulty on my side.
Okay, we can come back to you.
I don't know if we're going to get that clarified over here. My camera's been off and on all day long, but I'm willing to say what I have to do now if that's okay with you, sir.
Yeah, we have the audio, so why don't you go ahead?
Okay, sorry. Good afternoon, Chair and committee members. My name is Derek Valaroso, Honolulu Police Department, Major Events Division. I just want to say we stand by our written testimony in opposition of the bill as it would hamper our abilities to control certain protests and whatnot. So again, we strongly oppose this bill.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have Rachel Sisiliano. Support. Wendy Gibson Viviani in support. Diana Bethel in support. Fina Bonohan in support. Nicholas Leverence in support. I guess that's it. Moving on, members' questions.
Yeah, questions for HPD?
Senator Valaroso?
Standing by.
Yeah, so I kind of read the bill and I've seen both sides of what you're trying to say, but when we're talking about peaceful demonstration and protection of both sides, law enforcement and the public, I guess the community what they're concerned about is because a lot of this gear that you guys are having, and not only you guys in Dillon, are more for war-type atmosphere, yeah, war-type kind of stuff. We're talking civilians and citizens, so do you have, are you against the whole bill or you're against the whole, or you can be workable in what we tried to say on the military equipment?
Well, I think when I read the bill, and again, I'm brand new to this section in Major Events Division, but when I read the bill, for me, I'm just looking at it like you said, for both sides, right? But whether it's labeled military or not, I think it's going to be used in a proper way in order to do crowd dispersion and whatnot. But I think that's just the kind of terms that it's saying as far as it being the equipment name. How we use it, of course, we're going to, in my opinion, we're going to use it in a way that is not going to be harmful to anyone. But again, in these dynamic situations that we look at, and again, differences between dynamic and a difference between a peaceful presentation, yes, we're going to have to weigh the odds of using that type of equipment, but not being able to have that ability to have that equipment with us, I think would hamper us in case of other events. So yes, to answer your question, I think I'm willing to look at both sides and maybe not the full thing, but again, if we just obliterate us just not having any type of equipment is not a good thing for us here at HPD.
The only reason why I bring this up is that it wasn't your guys' equipment, but on the Mona. The question that I, with the Mona is that the equipment that they was going to bring up there, even though people that was peaceful and other people that they considered to be aggressive, the techniques that they was going to use up there is not going to, was only going to affect the one that they felt that wasn't peaceful, but it was going to affect everybody up there. So that's the reason why I guess certain type of equipment that you guys have is very questionable. So I appreciate your honesty. Thank you.
Thank you. What's our, what time do I return? Next. Senate Bill 2393. Chuck Fuigoi, Deputy Attorney General.
Yes, thank you and good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. For Senate Bill 2393, we recommend that a criminal penalty section be added into the bill. The current draft allows local law enforcement to arrest a violator, but it does not have a criminal penalty section, so it is unclear what to charge the violator with or how the prosecution will proceed. Existing section 58626 specifically goes with foreign orders of protection and it does have a penalty section in there. So it is our recommendation that we insert a reference to 58626 into this bill. That's all I have and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Kent.
Aloha. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in strong support of SB 2393. This bill offers tools for police officers to combat domestic violence and help our Canadian visitors. In December 2006, Ingabor Jan Dura, 82, from Edmonton, Canada, arrived with her husband to stay at the Ilikai Hotel. By the end of February, she was dead with over 100 stab wounds. Her husband met police at the door and stated that he had killed his wife. That case has stayed in my mind ever since it happened. So when as a uniform law commissioner, I heard about this uniform law, I thought about Ms. Jan Dura. SB 2393 would give police another tool against domestic violence, separating the people who are arguing and enforcing the no-contact judgment or order as a step in keeping people safe. And I think that's something everyone can support. Thank you for hearing my testimony and I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you. That's the last testifier. So members' questions, otherwise we're moving on to Senate Bill 2514. Lee Hayakawa, Officer of Public Defender.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Assistant Public Defender Lee Hayakawa. The Office of the Public Defender offers strong support for SB 2514. Specifically, the Office of the Public Defender supports the implementation of a good time credit system where probationers who fully comply with their terms and conditions of probation are rewarded with reduced probationary periods. OPD is also in strong support of the prohibition of revoking probation based solely on technical violations of probation. Specifically, we are in support of probation officers setting a hearing for individuals that are only guilty of technical violations without the issuance of a bench warrant. Over time, both of these aspects of SB 2514 will lead to less pre-child detainees and less open terms of imprisonment and in the long run will drastically reduce the jail and prison populations across the state. I will be available for any questions the committee might have. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Kat Brady.
Aloha. Chair Nishihara, Vice Chair Decoit and members of the committee, Kat Brady, testifying on behalf of Community Alliance on Prisons in support of this measure. We think it's so important to have incentives so that people can earn their way out of probation. It's endless probation serves nobody. As of January 24th, there were 401 people on probation statewide in Hawaii. Reforming probation so the state doesn't incarcerate so many people who, you know, commit technical violations, not calling their probation officer substance misuse. We just think that there are better ways that can be, that can address these situations. We believe that good time credits are really important. We don't want, we don't want to think, we don't want to send people to a place where there's no exit. So we think it's really important to give people hope and to give them the tools so that they can earn their way off of probation. We definitely support good time credits. We need alternatives to help people who don't comply with conditions, which should be reasonable and actually address the underlying offense.
Can you summarize?
Yep, please pass this bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Carrie Anne.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair Carrie Anne Shirota on behalf of the ACLU in strong support of SB 2514. The probation system in Hawaii needs urgent reform. Imposing incarceration on people for technical violations, not new convictions, contributes heavily to overcrowding in our severely overcrowded jails and prisons. On average, 1/4, 25% of all jail and prison admissions in Hawaii each week are the result of parole and probation infractions. Let's think about the costs. Kat mentioned that there are about 401 or 405 persons on probation. We spend 290 a day and that amounts to $80,000 that taxpayers are paying per day. If you times that by 365 years, days a year, that's 32 million. We're spending so much money rather than addressing the underlying roots. If someone has a technical violation, missing a meeting with a pro officer, maybe they now have a relapse, which often is a part of the recovery process. Let's have a response that helps people address underlying issues. Putting people in prison where often they do not get the treatment, health support that they need does not help that individual and it does not help our community when they go back into the community not well-prepared to be contributing members of their family and our communities. This is a sensible measure. Other states have enacted it. New York is leading the way. Let's have a good time credit system to incentivize compliance with the rules, but let's not take the drastic measure of incarcerating people in our severely overcrowded jails, which is inhumane and where COVID is flaring everywhere.
Okay, can you summarize, Carrie? I'm sorry.
Yes, Senator. Lawmakers have a chance to do what works. Please invest in database-driven solutions. Please pass me. Thank you.
Thank you. We miss Nicholas Leverence.
Hi. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members. My name is Nicholas Leverence. I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaii Health and Armed Reduction Center. Probation reform is long overdue, given that our probation system, which is actually quite a bit, it's almost 20,000 people. I think 300 people is our parole population. It drives our perennially overcrowded jails. Just for context, Hawaii has the longest average term of probation in the nation, in the nation, with an average term of almost 59 months. Not surprisingly, this is almost in alignment with the base penalty for simple possession of drug use, which is five years in prison with a $10,000 fine. So this bill represents a key opportunity for this legislature to place limits on parole and to reduce parole population and to reduce the number of people in jail at any given point in time. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Hey, thank you. Albert Cook, Deputy Attorney General.
Good afternoon, Chair Nishihara, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Deputy Attorney General Albert Cook and the department opposes this bill. While our written testimony goes into more specific details, the department opposes the bill as it's unnecessary and unnecessarily limits the court's discretion and ability to impose appropriate sentences as required by Section 706-606, subsection two of the Hawaii statutes. And it limits the court's ability to consider the public safety concerns in its attempts to supervise and rehabilitate those sentenced to a term of probation. I'll be available for any questions if necessary.
Okay, thank you. Brooke Mamizuka. Judiciary.
Good afternoon. Chair Nishihara and Vice Chair Decoit. My name is Brooke Mamizuka and I'm the probation administrator for the First Circuit Court. Here participating is Craig Hiyasu, probation administrator for Maui, Dean Hiraki for the island of Hawaii, Renet Parma for the island of Hawaii. Although judiciary is not opposed to the effort to reduce incarceration, we respectfully oppose Senate Bill 2514. As it would negatively impact public safety, it will also limit the effectiveness of our probation supervision. In fiscal year 2021, the statewide probation offices managed 18,505 offenders. From that amount, 495 offenders were returned to court for technical violations and 160 were returned for new convictions. We had 608 that actually applied for early termination and were successfully completed probation and a maximum amount of sentence that were completed were 2,207. We stand on our written testimony and we are available for any questions from the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Mark Patterson. Okay, I don't see Mark. Can we move on to Tricia Nakamatsu? City prosecuting attorney.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Prosecutor Tricia Nakamatsu, appearing on behalf of the Honolulu Prosecuting Attorneys Department. We are opposed to SB 2514. The main reason is that it really removes any ability for the probation officers or essentially the court to revoke someone's probation or to impose even short, brief sense of incarceration as repercussions for violating the terms and conditions of their probation while perhaps proponents of the bill or the bill itself seems to minimize the importance of some of these terms and conditions. The department feels that these are all part of the rehabilitative process, that probation is aimed at providing for these probationers, whether it's not consuming alcohol and drugs in order to maintain a clear mind and comply with the terms and conditions of their probation, not associating with certain individuals who, even if they're not directly related to the crime that was committed, may be bad influencers, bad association, which are known to get that offender, that particular offender, perhaps into, onto the wrong path. The thing that is good about probation is that the probation officer and the court have the ability to work on each particular case. They know, they look at the circumstances of each case of each probationer and they try to tailor the requirements to each case. There are incentives, there are tools already that can be used to incentivize them, such as amending the terms and conditions of their probation or lightening the requirements or even terminating probation early in certain cases. On the flip side, though, they do need those repercussions when people simply do not comply with some of these important requirements. One of the most important of which we feel is treatment. Treatment is perhaps one of the most effective tools that can be used for long-term addressing recidivism and making sure that people don't come back to refend if they do get the proper treatment. And programs such as Hope Probation have successfully used this. We include some information in our testimony about the Hope Probation program and they need that type of authority to be able to put probationers in for short. I'm sorry.
It did it again. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll just summarize. Our final concern is the
No, it keeps cutting me off. Okay.
Technical violation is defined is just so broad. It wouldn't, it would allow
I hate to cut you off, but you've exceeded a minute. And we do have your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Where do they look for questions?
Lauren Walker. Francine Dudewa. Lisa Sekai-Darcy. Wendy Gibson Viviani. Elena Funakoshi. Lisa Sekai Darcy, Wendy Gibson Viviani, Elena Funakoshi. Bradine Kialhio Lalo. We have about ten others also in support. So I think I'm gonna, I don't see their names up here on the board, so we'll just, um, go on to the next measure. We're really, really running out of time. Senate Bill twenty-five fifteen. Um, Fred Hume. Is opposed, Max Latani. Opposed.
I'm here, Senator. Um, just briefly, um, the department will stand on its written testimony in opposition of this bill. We really feel it's not necessary at this time. We have laws and policies and admin rules in place to address early discharges of parole. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Corey, uh, Reinti. Probing Authority.
President Chair.
Okay. I see we have Max, uh, we have Edmund Hune again. You want
Sorry, Senator, technical difficulties with my monitor. Anyway, thank you, uh, Chair Nishihara, Vice Chair Decoy, members of the committee. The Hawaii Probing Authority is in strong opposition to this bill that seeks to limit, if not prohibit, the management and supervision of individuals on parole. As chairperson, I oversee the quasi judicial functions of the board as well as the overall administration and management of the, of the Probing Authority. The, by law and eligibility, the board administratively addresses good time via reduction of minimum while incarcerated as well as early discharge of sentence based on performance while on parole supervision. When first introduced in two thousand and eighty to public safety, the bill would require a considerable amount of resources, staffing, logistical and financial burdens, as well as potential litigation concerns. The bill as written does not account for the lack of community resources addressing substance abuse, mental health, co-occurring disorders, and even more so on the neighbor islands. There are a limited number of clean and sober and therapeutic living programs, the number of parole opportunities granted to the incarcerated population, nor those who refuse substance abuse treatment, sex offender programming, as well as medication for mental health issues. The larger percentage of uneducated and unskilled inmates is severely challenged when they are released into the community. Also, vic, uh, individuals who are convicted of property crimes have no drug-related convictions but are convicted of property crimes. So I'll wrap it up with this. In closing, people, everyone should remember that parole is not a right but an earned privilege, providing an opportunity to be released from court-imposed confinement back into the community. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, uh, John Ikindaga.
Yes, hi, um, good afternoon Senator Nishihara and, um, Senator Decoy, other members of the committee. The Office of the Public Defender strongly supports SB two-five-one-five, especially the provisions related to good time credit and technical violations. Right now, the current system does not sufficiently work to, especially in the cases of sentenced felons whose primary means of release other than maxing out in prison is via the parole system. Uh, this is a much-needed measure to help reduce the severely overcrowded prison populations and the resulting financial and social costs. And with that, I will stand on my written testimony and be available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Tricia Nakamoto. I'd like to remind you, Tricia, you got only a minute.
One minute, got it. Thank you, Chair. Um, Deputy Prosecutor Tricia Nakamoto appearing on behalf of the Honolulu Prosecuting Attorneys Office Department. We are opposed to this bill. Um, essentially would eliminate the Probing Authority's discretion and cast aside the importance of their duty to assess these cases on a case-by-case basis. Um, we feel that one of the most important aspects of uh, an offender's rehabilitation is treatment and that is essentially cast aside as well in, as part of this bill. Um, while the proponents of the bill may feel that people are just getting their paroles revoked or getting imprisoned for single insignificant violations, that's really not been the department's observation or experience at all. Um, and we, we do feel that the Probing Authority does its utmost to ensure that it's looking at each case on a case-by-case basis and it does have the tools to reward, um, as well as, uh, impose repercussions for noncompliance.
Thank you, Tricia.
Thank you.
Uh, Kat Brady.
Aloha, Kat Brady testifying on behalf of Community Alliance on Prisons. I'm going to keep this really short. One of the problems with the parole, um, department is that their employees think that their job is punishment. Their job is reentry and they should be assisting returning citizens to successfully re-enter their communities. But instead, I think a lot of people in that department believe that their job is punishment and I have proof of that. Um, reforming parole is so, is that the state doesn't reincarcerate so many people. Look at the annual reports and see the small number of people who actually get paroled. It's ridiculous. Hawaii needs to implement the altern, the alternatives um, that were in the HCR eighty-five report. Thank you. We support this bill.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Nicholas Leverens.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair and members, Nicholas Leverens on behalf of Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center and strong support of this bill. Um, this is another very important way for the legislature to put place limitations upon the revocation, uh, upon, uh, the revocation of parole, uh, which over crowds our carceral facilities. And I would just say that treatment for substance use and other behavioral health conditions is best done outside of the framework of the criminal legal system. A criminal legal system which has since territorial days uh, significantly worsened this condition of, of native Hawaiians. And, uh, all the data bears out that drug enforcement in particular falls disproportionately hard on the native Hawaiian community. So instead of, of making programming inside the carceral facilities to address native Hawaiian issues, they need, the state should stop criminalizing native Hawaiians en masse. Thank you for the opportunity
Thank you.
to provide testimony.
Okay, Carrie Anne, again, again, remind you, you only got a minute.
Yes, aloha. We're in strong support of this measure. We think that there's always improvement in parole in any of our institutions and agencies and the proof is in the pudding. If you look at the number of people that are incarcerated and transitioning to the community, there are high rates of recidivism, whether on probation or parole. So that's telling you that our current system is not working effectively. There are other states that are looking at data, evaluating their programs, processes and services and making significant differences. New Jersey decreased their population by eight thousand people. New York decreased their population by eighteen thousand people. There's a number of ways that we can decrease the carceral system. It's from bail to probation and parole reform. And we need to think about the cost savings. If we put less people in our jails and prisons, which is the most expensive and least, at least effective response to crime, two hundred and nineteen dollars a day we could spend for treatment in the community, housing statements, assistance in so many other ways that actually is proven to help people. So let's, let's use our money effectively and let's put it in what works. But if you continue to just keep letting probation parole, all of these institutions say we're perfect as is, we don't need to do anything differently. We're never going to change our system, we're going to have to keep building more jails and prisons. That's my family, other children, future generations being impacted. That's what the money is for. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, now I'm going to move on to, although we have other people that send their testimonies. Um, I won't be reading their names, but we do have their testimonies. Thank you. Senate Bill twenty-six sixteen. Anyway, the previous bill, we had a total of twenty. What was the number here? Just to inform the committee, we had a total of we had twenty-three in support and twenty, twenty-eight opposed. So we're now moving into Senate Bill. Okay, we are on Senate Bill twenty-six sixteen, we have Kurt Cartrell.
Hey, good afternoon, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kurt Cartrell, Administrator for the Division of State Parks. Uh, we stand on our written testimony, offering comments and some proposed amendments should the measure pass forward. Mahalo.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Ellen Carpenter, P L N R.
He's just my backup.
Okay, Shelley Paiva. Shelley.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Major Shelley Paiva of the Honolulu Police Department and the department will stand on its written testimony in opposition of this bill. I have it, um, if you have any questions, I have, I can answer.
No, I read your testimony. Thank you. Anyway, uh, we have some others, but there are just sending comments, uh, either oppose or comments or support. So we're moving on to Senate Bill twenty-seven eighty and we have Lance Goto. Lance, not there. Okay, Max Latani.
Hi, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Senator. Max Latani, Department of Public Safety. Uh, department will stand on its testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Oh, I see Lance is back on. Okay, Lance, I'll let you go on.
Well, thank you, uh, Chair Nishihara. Lance with the Department of the Attorney General. This is a Senate Bill twenty-seven eighty, getting to power of arrest. And the Attorney General, uh, the department supports this bill. We think that the amendments to section eight oh three dash sixteen, updating the list of, uh, federal agencies whose law enforcement officers may make arrests for certain offenses under state. It's an important bid. State and county law enforcement officers, uh, rely on the assistance of some of these federal agencies, especially in times of need.
You're not going to say the notice, you have to keep account that that's a copy of support, opposed.
Okay, uh, thank you. We had, uh, one support, one opposed and four comments on that one. On this one, we had six support, uh, no opposition. Okay, uh, Tinojima, HPD.
Hello. Yes. My name is Tinojima. I'm the captain in the Congress Space Division and we're in support of this bill. I always believe that it's important for joint efforts in any kind of investigation, making them a unified unit, knowing that basically work together is always been beneficial to everyone in the state. Thank you. I'm open for questions.
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions? Otherwise, we'll move on to Senate Bill thirty forty-three. This one, we have five in support and two hundred in opposition with one comment. Starting with Amy Mora Kami, Deputy Attorney General.
Good afternoon Chair Nishihara, members of the committee. The Department of the Attorney General supports SB thirty forty-three. This bill addresses the recent federal court ruling in New Kentucky versus Connors, which found that the Hawaii statute that requires a fire, a permit to acquire to be used within ten days and the requirement that all firearms be physically inspected at the time of registration to be unconstitutional. This bill addresses the decision by increasing the permit to acquire a firearm from ten days to thirty days and strikes the requirement that all firearms be physically inspected but requires physical inspection of three classes of firearms. Basically firearms that were manufactured without a serial number. Firearms that are being brought in from out of state and firearms being transferred between private individuals. These amendments are necessary to protect the public. The ten-day, um, the thirty-day expiration date to use a permit is necessary because people's information changes over compares to their qualifications.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, I think, uh, your time has run out, uh, so.
Just in fact, in conclusion, you're asked that the this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have your testimony.
Right Chair, just letting you know, you have about, uh, twenty minutes left on this.
We're going to have to really move it then. Okay, we have John Abbott for Hawaii Firearms Coalition. John, I think you're off. You have to, you're muted though.
The unmuting muting game. Hello Chair, uh, my name is John Abbott with Hawaii Firearms Coalition. I appreciate the opportunity to present testimony today. Uh, Hawaii Farms Coalition strongly opposes this bill. Um, if you, um, look at the actual ruling, which is attached to our testimony, it very clearly states that any form of in-person registration or inspection, uh, any, any form of in-person inspection of the firearm was found to be unconstitutional. And basically, if they pass this bill as written, it'll be a direct violation of the court ruling and it'll force a second lawsuit uh, to remove those infringements once again. As the trial, uh, and the decision decided, the state did not present any, any reason uh, that supported the public safety increase from these measures. Am I out of time?
I think you just ran out of time, but thank you. I did read the testimony.
Thank you. We, we oppose this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Tanaka.
Hi, um, I stand by my written testimony, but just wanted to say, you know, the way the newer procedure is, it's a lot easier for me or in others that we don't have to take off time from work to bring our firearm in. Hawaii law, I cannot bring my gun to work because one, my employer doesn't allow it, but I cannot just leave it in my trunk either, which means I got to drive home from work, pick up my firearm, drive back to the police station to show it in person, then drive it back home and then back to work. I cannot do this in my one-hour lunch break. Um, you know, so again, to keep the online registration as is and I'm for that.
Okay.
Not this bill, not for this bill.
Right, you have posted a bill. Okay, Ryan Tina Hero. You're, you're muted, Ryan.
Senators of the KSM Committee, thank you for your time. I just want to reiterate my strong opposition to the bill as is, as is in my testimony.
Okay, thank you. We have your testimony.
Hello Senators, all right, I'm back.
Okay, thank you.
I want to reiterate my strong opposition as written in my written testimony. The very fact that we are holding this testimony virtually rather than in person demonstrates that the real threat to public safety is the COVID-nineteen virus that spread person to person. And the in-person requirement in SB three zero four three contradicts very aspects of public safety. In the event that we have to present our firearms, we're putting, put at risk with, with this requirement. In order to better ensure public safety, the only way forward is to strike out the provisions requiring any inspections of our firearms in person, again, because that endangers the public. And then two, to retain the, uh, current virtual construct of
Summarize, Ryan.
one, working well, and two, saves time and money for constituents and state employees alike. Available for any questions should you have any.
Okay, thank you. Michael Rice.
Aloha, uh, I'd like to reiterate my opposition to this. I mostly started my testimony, but I would like to add about the incident I mentioned in it where my brother was actually attacked while he was in line at, to register his handgun at HPD. He, this incident happened real fast, man just punched him in the chest like, you know, wanted to fight him and nobody in line noticed it before the guy walked away. Nobody from HPD noticed it. I actually And nobody in line noticed it before the guy walked away. Nobody from HPD noticed it. I actually, he texted me because I was in the garage, down in the garage feeding the meter, and I managed to get up there before, like, HPD responded to it. And they're like, oh, do you want to press charges? And, you know, that's, that's pretty much all they did. I mean, if he had just grabbed the case that my brother's gun was in and ran off, now some crazy guy has a gun. That's a risk that the in-person, that's one of the risks that the in-person registrations have on this. If, yeah, if there's any questions, I use the rest of my time, but I am available.
Thank you, Michael. We have your testimony as well. Andrew Roberts.
Good morning, Chair, uh, members of the committee. Um, I'm in opposition to this bill. I want to cut touch on just two points. One is the Attorney General saying that this is a matter of safety. Since COVID nineteen in twenty twenty all the way to mid twenty twenty one, we did not have any registration in the state. Uh, people could not go to the police station and register their guns, and that was because the police departments were closed for walk-in meetings. Where was their concern then? The other thing is to point out is since two thousand twelve until two thousand twenty one, three hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and ninety-one guns were registered in the state. From that, the police departments reported that just fourteen guns violated state laws, uh, restrictions on the type of guns that you can own. That zero point zero zero three seven percent of firearms actually violated the law. There's no public safety issue that requires in-person inspection, and in fact, the police departments have written down many things wrong in see police, uh, officers measuring firearms with rulers and tape measures and getting inaccurate measurements and then having to be verified with superior officers. My personal registration had my eye color as pink. Um, my eyes are brown and that was written on my board. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Andrew. Todd Yoshitake, Yoku Take.
Good afternoon, uh, Public Safety Committee. I'm Todd Yukutake, uh, plaintiff in the lawsuit this bill is involved in. I oppose SB three zero four three. I do not want in-person inspections of any firearms, but I do support the thirty day permit expiration date change. Uh, this bill serves no purpose and is a burden to me. Judge Seabright rejected the state's arguments, and no other state has an in-person firearms inspection requirement anywhere in the nation. Cost me time and money to register my guns in person. Police departments have already implement, implemented remote firearms registration through the phone, email, or internet in compliance to the judge's order. The people love it. They come up to me and thank me and thank the police departments for doing this. It saves them time and money. Also, people can voluntarily go to a police department to get their firearms inspected, so this bill isn't needed. If someone's concerned if their firearm may be, um, not in compliance, they can go to the police department and check it out. Please oppose SB three zero four three or amend it to remove in-person inspection of all firearms and keep the thirty day permit expiration date. Then this.
Thank you. Okay, so, like I said, we had, um, two hundred people opposed to it, so we'll now move on to Senate Bill thirty one forty. And, uh, it's Jared Ridula. Jared.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair. Jared Ridula, the State Narcotics Administrator. Um, thank you for hearing this. Bill is a very, uh, important bill to us. We are in support. Uh, Senator, we've encountered significant resistance in the controlled substance, uh, the legitimate industry of controlled substances, particularly in, um, some of the healthcare institutions to report incidents of theft, fraud, or embezzlement, uh, or any diversion of the controlled substances in their inventory. Often, these businesses don't like the limelight of law enforcement involvement, or, um, they're afraid of publicity, and as a result, they don't report that to us on a timely basis. If we don't get timely reports of these incidents, the chances of us resolving these types of situations significantly reduced. As well, we've also encountered, uh, reluctance with those businesses cooperating and providing records, reports, or videos of these types of incidents. We've even had employers and businesses order their employees not to cooperate and turn over materials to us. And finally, um, this measure attaches a misdemeanor penalty if a person, um, prevents another person from reporting or knowingly, uh, does not report, and we need that in order to enforce compliance.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Jared. Okay, uh, there were no others to testify for that, so we're moving to Senate Bill thirty two eleven. Uh, Sylvia Dolena. Sylvia?
Yes. Aloha. Chair, Vice Chair, and PSM Committee members, I'm Sylvia Dolena. I can, uh, I'm representing Kulia E. Kanuou Outreach Services and Aloha Animal Advocates. My colleague, uh, Darlene Maka Anna and I strongly support the funding of a well-functioning police station central to the criminal activity occurrences in Hawaii Ocean View Estates. Because we monitor over fifty Facebook pages in various communities in Puna District and Ka'au Districts, we have visibility to the many posts people place regarding crimes and the increase in violence of these crimes.
Yeah. Sylvia, um, we have the testimony, but thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Marilyn Rose. In support. Uh, Jordan Anger.
Hello, good afternoon, committee members. Uh, my name is Jordan Anger. My wife and our son Gavin, mother-in-law Joy, and I have lived in Hove for eight years. In that time, we have seen a dramatic increase in crime in the area. There are over a hundred and fifty miles of road just for the Hawaiian Ocean View Estates subdivision, not including Rancho's Kulakai Road to the Sea and more. The need for a police substation in Hawaiian Ocean View Estates is felt by all in the community, those who have lived here for decades and those who are just moving to the area. Since moving here, we have witnessed abandoned cars being dumped, arson, stolen cars roaming around the area, cars without plates or windshields driving around with little consequence, drug usage, and we have read of countless burglaries, theft, and assaults. It seems an awful unnecessary burden for the officers who work so hard in our community to have to travel all the way to the opposite end of Na'aleh to book and process. And our community in Hove deserves the best response time our good officers can provide. Please support SB three two one one.
Thank you. Okay, uh, that pretty much stays clear of testifiers. Uh, we did have thirteen in support and no opposition to that measure. So I skipped one, which I'm going back to Senate Bill thirty one forty, uh, Jared Ridula.
Good afternoon, Chair. Jared Ridula, the State Narcotics Administrator. We're going to stand on our written testimony in support. This is the measure that aligns our state law with, um, new changes in federal drug law. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this brings us to the end of the agenda. Members, um, we're going to go into the break room right now. Can we go to the break room? Okay, we ready? Okay, so these are recommendations by the, uh, for the committee. And we'll see how the bill, uh, how they devote votes. For Senate Bill twenty two zero zero one.
Vote already. Just go into the vote, Senator.
Recommendation is to go with the, um, amendment from the Dags, from the Attorney General. Uh, pass with amendments. Chair goes aye.
Members voted on SB two zero zero one. Chair goes aye. Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Baker. Excuse Senator Rivera.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Reservations.
Reservations. Chair, your, um, your, your, your is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Senate Bill twenty two thirty nine, uh, again, the best it has is.
Members voting on SB two two three nine. Chair and Vice Chair votes aye, recognizing, uh, Senator Baker not here and the others, uh, any reservations or needs?
Reservation.
Reservations for Senator Rivera.
Reservations.
Reservations for Senator Favella. Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill twenty three ninety three. Uh, pass with amendments, and the amendments are, as I stated, it's from the, uh, Attorney General. So pass with amendments.
Members, what is? Members voted on SB two three nine three. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye, recognizing the other members here except for Senator Baker. Excuse any reservations or needs?
Reservations.
Reservations for Senator Favella. Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill twenty five fourteen, uh, they are technical amendments. So pass with amendments. Chair goes aye.
Members voting on SB two five one four. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye, recognizing Senator Baker. Excuse. Is there any reservations or needs?
Reservations.
Oh, uh, Senator Rivera, reservations. Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill twenty five fifteen, um. You know, this, this one has, uh, quite a bit of controversy about it. Uh, my, uh, inclination is to recommend we defer this bill. So twenty five fifteen, defer it. Twenty six sixteen, Senate Bill. We'll take the amendments by DLNR. Pass with amendments.
Members voting on SB two six one six. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, recognizing the excuse of Senator Baker. Any reservations or needs?
Reservations.
Reservations for Senator Favella. Chair, your measures adopted.
Okay, Senate Bill twenty seven eighty. Pass it as is.
Members of voting on Senate Bill two seven eight zero, Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, recognizing the excuse of Senator Baker. Any reservations or needs? Seeing none. Oh, sorry, Senator Favella reservation. Chair, your measures adopted.
And Senate Bill thirty, uh, forty three, we're gonna, um, defer this bill. Senate Bill thirty one forty, pass it as is with technical amendments. Well, technical amendments, so it's amendments, technical amendments, pass it with amendments.
Members voting.
Chair goes aye, pass with amendments.
Members voting on SB three on four zeros. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, recognizing the absence of Senator Baker. Any reservations or needs? Seeing none. Chair, your measures adopted.
Okay, Senate Bill thirty one forty one, uh, again, pass it, passing with, uh, technical amendments, so pass with amendments.
Members voting on SB three one four one. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, recognizing the absence of Senator Baker. Any reservations or needs? Hearing none. Chair, your.
Okay, final bill, uh, Senate Bill thirty two eleven, pass it as is. Chair goes aye.
Yeah, members voting on SB three two one one. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, recognizing the absence of Senator Baker, uh, any reservations or needs? Hearing none. Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to. We're gonna move right into the, uh, uh, deferred agenda of February third. These are deferred measures on Senate Bill twenty fourth fifty two, pass it as is.
Members voting on SB two four five two. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, recognizing the absence of Senator Baker. Any reservations or needs?
Reservations.
Reservations for Senator Rivera. Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you. And the final measure, which is, um, twenty seven seventy four. I. Oh, twenty seven seventy seven. I have some, uh, I admit, uh, amendments to it. That was suggested by SMA and myself, looking at the problem. The department should make a reference within the law to address the concerns and advocates and the department concerns of prior requirements and staffing shortages of female gender specific posts, as well as the hiring and training of female ACOs to facilitate, effectuate the purposes of this bill. And, um, that'll be the amendment, uh, that, uh, will be placed into this bill. Anyway, so that's the amendment.
Chair, chair discussion.
Any discussion on this?
Um, Chair, just, uh, just that, you know, I know that sometimes we cannot have women, um, guards there to do the pat down. I would recommend that if there is a pat down, that that pat down is recorded and logged by who the male, uh, guard is.
Right.
For the record.
Right, so it'll, it'll be that, uh, what they'll, what they can, raising the concerns. Also, the department will increase its recruitment and training of female ACOs to satisfy the requirements of female gender-specific posts. And the department will have to present a report of its effort in recruiting, hiring, and training of female ACOs twenty days prior to the twenty twenty-three legislative session. And this act will be, be take effect on July twenty fifty, so the bill can move forward for further discussion and to the sharing.
Okay. Thank you.
So to pass it with these amendments, Chair goes aye.
Members voting on SB two seven seven seven. Chair and Vice Chair goes aye, recognizing the absence of Senator Baker. Any reservations or needs? Hearing none. Uh, Chair, your measures adopted.
Thank you, and that brings us to the end of the agenda. It's been a long bit, long afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Allah.
Allah.
Thank you all.